Good evening, and welcome to the city council meeting on May the 23rd. Uh, Mayor Clerk, would you please read the roll call?
Mr. Shyland.
President.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
President.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Schiverducker.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
Eric.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Very good, thank you. Did all rise with me for the invocation, Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us. And he will lead us. Thank you, sir.
Your Lord, we're grateful for a break from the rain today. You brought some clear air and sunshine to us, and we're always thankful for the growing season and how you bless us. I'm gonna begin my prayer tonight a long ways from our home here in Manchester, England. I want to pray, Lord, for the many families that were affected by the terror attack of last evening, and our hearts are all broken when children are harmed in any way, and over half of those that perished in that attack were children. Father, we pray for the trauma there, for the families whose hearts are broken, and for the larger community. And, Lord, for this travesty in our world today, this could be anywhere, including our city, our families, and our people. Lord, we pray that there can be an end brought to terrorism in our world. Closer to home, Lord, we pray for Linda Newland, widow and her family of longtime city employee, Don Newland. We pray for your comfort and your blessings to be with them in their time of healing. For Gabriel Polston, for the circumstances of his health, the challenges that face his parents, Erica and Jeremy, we lift them up to you and him during this time, and ask you to especially bless and help them through this challenge. For the rest of our folks on the city list, I call it, I want to continue to pray for Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, and any and all others that are part of our city family. We lift up this session tonight, the discussions that will be held, and we pray for our mayor and council persons, and all of those that will participate in the work of our community. Guide and direct the thoughts and meditations and decisions that are made here, that they be pleasing to you. We're grateful, Lord, for the lifestyle that we live in mid-America, and we always want to express our gratitude for the goodness and for all these gifts. Bless us all, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you. One second. At the beginning of each council meeting, we set a time aside for anyone, any visitor who would like to address the council over concern within the city, they would like to have the council here. Council will take your testimony, will not respond, but may address it later in the evening. At this time, I invite anyone that'd like to address the council, please come forward. I just ask that you limit your comments to two or three minutes, and that the city clerk again will time you, and go from there. So is anyone present who'd like to address the council? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with the agenda. At this time, I'd like to amend the agenda, and Resolution Number 3284, I'd like to take off, off the agenda. We have some questions on that, and we'll investigate those in the next couple, two, three weeks or so, and bring that back to you when we're ready for it, and have a better idea of what we're dealing with. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to drop the, that Resolution 3284. Please signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and your disapproval by no. Okay, thank you very good. We have in attendance this evening David and Naomi Harper, who live at 309 East 9th Street, and we have a presentation for them that has been designated to them by the Historical Preservation Commission. If you all would come and meet me at the podium. I want to thank you all for participating. Thank you very much. In this particular program the city has, where we can designate your properties as a significant historic property. So, again, congratulations, and there is a screen, so I can't congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, you want to, we need a photo here. Pose for a picture. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
It's nice that folks participate in that, and it's definitely a nice program that we can designate those, those properties in our community that have historical preservation significance, excuse me, I get the right word. At this point, we'll now move on to approval of the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are the council meetings from April 25th and May 9th, Director's Administration Report, Appointment of Jennifer Milligan to the Personnel Committee Board, and the acknowledgement of the Board and Commission Reports from the Parks, Park Board, Public Utilities, and Historic Preservation, and the Airport Advisory Board. Does anyone desire to have an item removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I think that you've got several council people that'd like to talk about
I would like to remove the Director's Administration Report.
Okay, very good, thank you. We will move that to, to stand alone, and we'll take that item next. Is there any other item that you'd like to remove?
I don't see the financials.
The financials are its own separate.
Okay, okay, I was looking for it, thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion?
Motion to approve everything but the Director's Report.
Okay, very good, thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say if I was saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay. I'll now open the floor for discussion of the consent agenda. Who wants to take off?
Richard?
We're gonna bring, probably need to bring that up under council concern.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, we'll go ahead with what Mike wanted to discuss.
Well, go ahead, I'm looking for it right now.
Let's go ahead now with the DOA report. Do you have some discussion items?
I have one, okay, but I just had to find it. A little bit more difficult when it's all electronic. It's on the engineers' report, I'm sure, about the airport. Yeah, thereabouts. Okay. Yes, actually, it's on top of page 33. Windsock is not operational at nighttime, the safety issue needs to be pursued. Where do we stand with that? Did I mention, I saw it mentioned elsewhere, too, that's...
We investigated the issue. It appears that the contractor for the runway, we believe it's his issue, the electric department went out there and helped us investigate that. There was some conduit that was installed for lighting with that, with that project that we believe affected this windsock light. So, we've contacted the contractor, the contractor is going to fix it upon the next FAA flight check that they do out at the airport, which should be here pretty soon, so...
Why does the contractor have to wait for the flight check to come in and fix that?
Good question. The, the flight check is, is checking the papu lights that are out there, so his electrical contractor shouldn't be out there anyways, so it's gonna happen here real quickly anyway, so... Any other questions?
Before the end of the month? This is May 22nd.
I'm not gonna vouch for the electrical contractor's timeframe, but we hope it to be.
I mean, how, I mean, it says it's a safety issue, how big of a safety issue is it?
I'd like to defer to Wayne on that, because he's, he's actually flown in his eye.
Well, the windsock is basically to tell you which direction the wind's blowing, and you don't know that unless you can see it. So, I mean, if it's, if it's out at night, you can't see it.
Yeah, I don't know how many flights we have coming in now, but...
Well, at nighttime, you never know, because sometimes there are instructors out there giving instruction to their students that have to have so many hours of eating and flying, and so many hours of takeoff and landings at night. And unless you know what that wind is, most time you can get a hold of Columbia's Tower, and they can tell you what the wind is in Columbia. Now, is it gonna be the same here at Fulton? It's possible, but it's also possible that it's not. So therefore, you need to know what the wind is before you choose the runway to land, because sometimes you're landing downwind, you don't stop.
Thanks, thanks, Wayne. I will give the contractor a call tomorrow, see if we can expedite that at all.
Thank you. That's all I can ask for, thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on items on the DOA report?
I believe that I've forgotten if I had anything else. Anyone else?
Entertain a motion then for acceptance?
I move we accept the administration report.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion, a second, to accept the DOA report. All those in favor, please say if I was saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. In your packet is the financials for the month of April, and Ms. Holzloggs is with us this evening. She gave us some highlights, please, thank you.
I've noted that we have three months of sales tax collected now, and we're right at 1% ahead of last year, but as you all know, that'll ebb and flow throughout the year. We did receive $46,000 in the Track Phone Settlement, that was more than we anticipated. No one's asked for any money back yet, so we sent the 10% on to MML, per council recommendation.
Thank you.
And during the month of April, we ordered four SUVs, one for planning and protection, one for engineering, and two for the gas department. And I've been asked to update you on the balance in the Parks and Rec Stormwater Tax Account, and that request was made unfortunately after I submitted the packet, so I'll just tell you that Stormwater has $160,000, Parks and Rec has $110,000. The difference being the expense and encumbrance to the feasibility study. It's about $50,000.
For the, what was the Stormwater ballot? 160?
$160,000. That's as of the end of April.
That's for the, the Rick Center?
Yes. SAP and Designs, I believe, is the vendor.
And Parks and Rec was how much?
Parks and Rec is approximately $110,000. I believe the contract with SAP was $48,000 to $50,000, and they'd actually spent $24,000, and the other $10,000 is a hundred. So I just rounded. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Do we have any projects specifically earmarked for any of that money for this year, for this FY?
Parks and Rec is looking at a recreation center. Stormwater, I'm sure, has designs, but I've not seen any contractual project agreements.
Here in the, in the one council, maybe next council meeting or the council meeting after that, we're gonna bring a contract to you for some engineering studies on pilot area downtown of the Stormwater Collection System.
Around the Nichols Parking Lot, maybe?
It'll be included, part of that.
That was mentioned, the DOA report.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Holzler?
Move for approval of the financial report for the...
Second.
Month of April.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve the financial report. All those in favor, please say if I was saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, thank you very much, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Looks like we finished up our unfinished business. We'll move on to new business, and Clay, you wanna share with us what's going on?
We've met several times with the architects and the consultants. The consultants have come up with a, a market analysis, kinda tells us what, what activities are popular across the country, what activities are popular in our local area, gave us some participation rates, gave us some information on how much people are willing to spend on different recreational activities. They also did an activity and facility analysis, and that discussed different trends that are going on with recreation centers. They also gave us a list of activities that we could probably have in our facility, and we were able to look at kind of a general operating cost for different facilities, and compare that to the potential economic impact that it might have on the community. So we took all that information and kinda narrowed down what we wanted to have in a facility, or what we thought might be the most heavily used. And right now, what they're doing is they're taking what we gave them, and they're gonna try to put it into some type of design that fits within our construction budget. On the baseball side of it, we've looked at several designs that will set on, in the Tennyson Park area. We're pretty happy with the, the general layout. Right now, we probably just gotta look at maybe narrowing it down, where we have less fields, or we find some creative ways to lay it out, so we don't have to move so much dirt. Price is a little high right now on it, so we're looking at some ways to kinda reduce the, the cost of that. And I think once, once they have all that, those designs laid out, and they know what's gonna be in the building, they know what the baseball complex is gonna look like, they're gonna use all this information, and they're gonna come up with some, some operating costs, some potential revenue projections, and, and I think at that point, we'll be ready to come back to the council and say, here's what it's gonna cost to build, here's what it's gonna cost to operate, what do you think? So, that's where we're at. We're meeting this Thursday, they're coming into town this Thursday, we're gonna have a meeting, and hopefully we'll keep moving forward. Any questions?
Richard.
Yeah, I have one. I know that you decided on the Tennyson location, but is there any thought if you can't get your price down, of another, a backup location? Well, the only reason I'm saying that is that we facilitated for four years on City Hall, and we finally realized we came back to the first original ground we bought, because it was cheaper.
Yeah, well, I think the, we've had lots of discussions about different properties. The Yato Farm was, was a consideration. The, the hardest thing with the Yato Farm is that we have to find a way to get utilities there, and getting utilities, utilities to that site is gonna be very expensive. So, you know, we gotta look at weighing that versus the cost of moving dirt, things like that. The Park Board talked about it at the last meeting, and I think they kinda felt that they liked the idea of Tennyson Road, one, we already own the property, it's within the city limits, it's in town, and it was hope, they were hopeful that that might draw people into town. So, I think Tennyson Road property is probably the, the number one choice for the Park Board at this time. If, if the council, if the council wants to go in a different direction, or look at a different piece of property, we're probably at that point, I think. I don't think we wanna have them move too much forward with the Tennyson Road property, and then come back and, and change locations.
Finished, Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Okay. If memory serves, we had earmarked some money to start, you know, preparing to do those several years ago, and decided not to because of the cost of moving the dirt, so I'm kinda concerned, I don't wanna start going down this path again, and then end up abandoning it.
Yeah, and...
Let me address that one, that, because that was more my problem than it was Clay's. It was not the cost of moving the dirt, it's just that we, we didn't have any money to do anything after we moved the dirt.
Okay.
So our plan was just to move dirt, and then we'd just have a big mud hole out there.
Okay.
And I didn't think that was a good thing.
Probably not.
Okay, so...
And, and just to kinda give you an idea of what we're talking about, when we, when we talked about moving the dirt before, we were talking about $90,000 to $100,000 to get it level. The, our architect right now, his initial projection is around $300,000. So we think he's a little high, but he hasn't really got deep into it yet, because we're still kinda playing with how the fields are gonna lay out.
Sure.
So, we, we hope he's around that $100,000 mark.
Okay.
Have we already received the survey reports and everything? I mean, does, does he have good information to base?
He is. Our, our engineering department's been providing him with some information, so he, he's moving forward. Again, right now, it's just the initial cost that they've come up with is just too high, so we gotta find ways to narrow it down, and still find something that we're happy with.
Clay, are you, the, now, are you talking about Tennyson Road just being a ball field complex?
That's what we're talking about. We're talking about putting, you know, prob...
But not the community center?
Not the community center. We're talking about the community center being located at Veterans Park on State Street.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Did you have something, Ms. Gray?
Yeah, I don't know where this is starting and ending on Tennyson Road. Is it where Tennyson and Business 54th come together, or is it up by the fire station or is that?
Yes, it, it basically sets directly behind the fire station.
Okay.
And it probably goes...
To the west of it.
Yeah, it goes, it goes west maybe 300, 400 yards. There's a tree line that kinda divides the, the property.
So how many acres or whatever are we...
I believe it's about 55 acres.
Okay.
That includes what the fire station sets on.
Okay, just thanks.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, more of a comment. That was one of the reasons we put the fire station there, was because we thought it would be near the park, and there'd be people there all the time, that sort of thing.
Well, and the benefit of having it on that piece of property is the utilities are right there.
Sure.
They're easily accessible, and, and I think for the most part, people in the community can get to it pretty easily.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a good location, it's a nice plot of ground.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Any other questions for Clay? Okay, very good.
No, while he's there, real quick, could he comment on the golf game, Veterans Golf Game?
The Freedom Scramble?
Yes.
I can. We had, we had a record turnout, we had 56, probably after a few didn't show, we, I think we had 53 teams, 106 players, very good turnout. We took donations for the Honor Flight Program, Central Missouri Honor Flight Program. We were able to donate $206 to that program, and I, I think everybody had a great time. The weather kinda held off, got a little rainy towards the end, but I'm not sure who won. Mayor, did you win the tournament? No. I don't know who won the tournament. But it, it seemed like everybody had a good time, and it was a good event. Thank you.
What was the date on that?
That was the 19th, last Friday.
Last Friday.
19th?
Yeah.
So are we playing, are we starting to plan for next year?
It's, we'll probably start planning about March of next year for it. Yeah, but we'll, we'll have one every year, usually the second or third week of May.
Because I, I know another organization that might wanna get involved with helping with, you know, some logistics or something. I'll talk to you outside.
Just let me know.
For Clay Lee, you had in your report about the lights over the ballpark pills, what kind of lights are you looking, just to light up the signs that sit out there on there?
Some lamps over the signs at the various parks?
At the entrances.
And the ball field.
Are you talking about the park signs?
The decorative lights?
Yeah, and Jeff, Jeff had brought this up at one of our Park Board meetings. All the, the new brick signs that we put in the parks, they have a cap on them, like a PVC pipe sticking out, where at some point, we could, we could run electricity and put lamps on there. We, we didn't put lamps on there, because like the ones we have down here at Memorial, they're very expensive. So, I think right now, Jeff's thought was that with the pipes sticking up, the signs look kinda unfinished, and I kinda agree with that. So we looked at, we're looking at some different options, maybe some cheaper options, maybe putting a lamp on there with no electricity, but maybe a smaller fixture.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say to you, they, some of those new LED, LED bright lights, that you can put on the cap of a post-it, make a lot of light now, I'm kind of impressed with those new ones. They're cheaper to replace when someone bangles it.
But if, if you have some ideas, we'd, we'd be willing to listen to it. We're just, we're kinda just exploring options right now, and seeing what's the most, most affordable.
Solar would...
Now, I understand where you're going with them, so you're gonna put them all capable.
Clay, I've just gotten lots of comments that they looked unfinished, that it was obvious that something was supposed to be there that's not, and so it was a discussion of cost.
So you can't use the solar light or anything like that?
We can look at that, too. We haven't gone down that road, but yeah, we can look at that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you, Clay. Let's move on now with the agenda to council's concerns. Who wants to go? Okay. Rick, I guess we'll start with you.
Sure, I can start. I had one of my neighbors come to me about maybe we could look at traffic running up and down Hickman now that school's out. They seem to think that it's awful fast.
Okay.
Steve will take care of that.
Speeding on Hickman, okay.
Great, gotta get a ticket, man. My wife, not me.
Call for Moore?
Oh, gee, man. Well, for lack of time, I would like, I had talked to Mr. Hudson, Mr. Johnson earlier today. On the next council meeting, I'd like to review the ordinance on our solid waste containers of being on streets and sidewalks.
Okay.
And...
Good idea.
And Les, had my other one about, had a call from neighbors about people who parked more than two cars, and they don't have a driveway for it, but they have five cars in the grass of their front yard. And they are licensed, I told Les they were licensed, but they wanna know that you have to look in and out your front window and see cars, like it's a car lot or something. So, I don't know, I'm leaving that to Les and the administration to handle that.
True.
Anything else?
I'm be good today, I'm stopping.
Mr. Vaughn?
The only thing I had is, I wanted to check and see if there was a, any update on the house on Locust, the burned house.
We have invited those people to a meeting on June 6th, and at that time, we'll, we'll inform those folks that we're gonna take it down. We will have it inspected for asbestos, and as soon as that's done, we will put out a bid, someone to take the house down, take it to the landfill. And that also goes for a house up on Jefferson, and one on Grand Street.
And we'll assess it to the taxes?
Yes, we will. If they don't pay the bill, we'll set, we'll, we'll put it on the tax, onto the property.
All right. Thank you, Les. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Vaughn?
No, sir. Yes, sir. Actually, there is.
Yeah.
Wayne brought up the consent agenda.
Okay.
Nothing for you last time.
No, but I do.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. But...
This may take a while, you may wanna sit down.
Wayne brought up again about the consent agenda, and also concerned about that also, and I think we would like to bring that up at the next meeting for discussion.
During the work session?
Sir?
During the work session?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have one speaker that's scheduled for that, but I'm sure we can figure that
It may be a simple task here, I don't know. I've just been hearing...
It may be a simple, uh, task here, I don't know, I've just been hearing a lot of them just, a lot of talk about it.
And you want to do that in the work session? Okay.
We can, we can list it on the agenda at both places, if we don't get it done in the work session, we can bring it up again during the regular session.
Okay, that's fine.
Is there any specific information you'd like to have, or at least let us know, and we can try to have that for you. Okay. If there's something there. Okay, anything else, Richard?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gray?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask our, Mr. Les here, you know, the houses I told you about on Nineteen Jefferson and you checked them out? Where'd that big old pile of dirt come that's there at Nineteen Jefferson at that one boarded up house?
Well, that belongs to John Martin, that lot does, and he's gonna use that, he's gonna redo that old house setting there.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and he'll use that dirt around that house to fill in some places and, and do some yard work around there.
Okay, and then another thing, um, this may not be your field, that TLC company, they had a big old, they were carrying firewood, I'm calling it, of a truck setting in, I'm guessing that's their front yard. And I didn't see a license plate on that thing anywhere.
That would be probably the police department.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Stone?
I have two items, uh, one might be a simple one, Schultz Street, I know there's some roadwork being done across Schultz Street, and between that, there's a whole lot of gravel involved with that roadwork. And then there's also some gravel work being done on, on the residential property lower down on Schultz Street. And the recent storms, that entire area is just covered in gravel, and I don't know if that's.
Um, between Kyle and Daryl, we'll have somebody go take a look at it and rearrange it a bit.
And I know the, the gravel that's in the residential area that's closer to ravine has been there for at least over two years now, and it just, it's slowly washing out onto the street. But I know with the recent roadwork, it just made that whole street very covered in gravel. Uh, the second item, I don't know if it's been brought up here before or not, but I had three different people approach me in the last couple of weeks about the, the parking at Bartley School before and after school. Where the parking, people are parking along Fifty Four, both north and southbound lanes, before and after school to drop off kids and pick up kids. And there's, there's schoolchildren that are crossing Fifty Four to get to the cars that are parked on the opposite side. And it's, it's just been described as very dangerous, and it seems like that's, that's been a growing problem over the last couple of years. More and more cars are parking along Fifty Four, fewer cars are parking in the back lot. And it's, it just, it's becoming dangerous. And I don't know if that's a school board issue, if that's a traffic issue, if it's a police issue, if it's all the above.
I think you got it.
We talked about that one last year or the year before.
I think it's all above.
It's been a couple of years we've talked about that.
But I, I, I think we need to spend our time this summer resolving that issue before school starts again in the fall.
Keith Meyer, you have anything you'd like to address on that? Bartley School? Are you, do you want to do a study on it and give us some recommendations?
I think it would be viable to send a traffic commission.
Okay.
By the state road, if not, oh, I'll give it a different.
We'll do that too. Okay.
I just, if.
Very good, thank you.
If it means we start handing out tickets to, if that will get the attention, or if we need to go to the school board, I feel it's an issue needs to be resolved before school starts back up in the fall.
We'd probably have to make it no parking through there.
Jeff, do they have a crossing guard there?
And that may already be, I don't know.
Every now and then they'll have a crossing guard that's a little bit further up.
Chestnut.
Uh, for the kids to cross closer to Reed Street, and then there's a, there used to be a crossing guard down there at Chestnut. But what they're doing is they're going straight across Fifty Four right in front of the school.
Right.
To get to the cars that are parked, I guess it's what's now a payday loan. And.
Yeah.
And Travelier Motel and the other little.
Is it car dealership or something?
Little car dealer.
Right.
They're just crossing straight.
Very good, we'll send it to Traffic Commission for that as their consideration and recommendation, and then we'll see what else we can come up with.
Sure.
Kyle, when the meeting goes, notice goes out, invite the school to that meeting as well, thank you.
The principal and, you know.
Superintendent or someone.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay. Mr. West?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I have a few things, um, I'd like to thank, uh, the city clerk for sending us the meeting notices, it's nice to have, I'm not able to get to a lot of them, but it's nice to know the meetings that are coming up in case I can make something. The speed limit sign we talked about a while back when we were looking at Wood Street situation, the flashing thing, have we gotten anywhere with purchasing another one, investigating how much it is?
Or one that's portable?
Yeah, the portable thing.
Four to eight thousand dollars.
How many?
Four to eight.
Four to eight, okay.
Or, or more.
Yeah. I think it'd be nice that, again, it might go hand in hand with what we're talking about, maybe the Traffic Commission can think about that, see if we can find the funds somewhere. I think that was a nice, uh, I'm not sure if it was a deterrent, but it at least reminded people when they were over the speed limit. And I understand we had, uh, some damage to some of our city facilities with some of the storms we had late, recently, could, uh, somebody?
Correct.
Brief us on that?
Rob, you want to address that?
Yeah, most of the damage, uh, during the, uh, storm last, uh, Friday, it seemed like around six thirty, seven o'clock. Um, there was damage at the airport, uh, damaged a, uh, kind of took the roof off of one hangar. Uh, there was a plane stored in that hangar, uh, ripped a little bit of the roof off of the adjacent hangar, uh, caused a little bit of other damage, there was a door that was blown off. Uh, the door issue's very repairable. An adjuster's gonna be here Thursday or Friday this week to go out and take a look at that, I've sent them some pictures, I think they just kind of want to size it up.
Okay.
This was on, on the older hangars, uh, two, three, uh, five come to mind, and I think number thirteen, yeah. They, those had to be pointed out to me as well, I wasn't sure what was what, but, but Wayne, I'm sure knew.
Hearing, hearing that it was an older one is probably good news in some ways, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So with, with Murma, is that our?
Yeah, uh, Murma and, then, then they have a third-party adjusting company that, that they work with, so that lady will be coming in out of St. Louis.
Okay.
Uh, to visit. The other property was at the old warehouse building, uh, the, the, the old rock, brick assorted material building, kind of the middle of the complex up there. It had extensive damage, a lot of metal off the roof, uh, two-by-fours, uh, blown here and there, nails strewn across the parking lot, uh, it's quite a mess right now. We're in the process of getting that at least cleaned up, um, that building is not insured from a property perspective, we had liability coverage on that, but it really had no functional value, uh, any longer.
Right. Is that, is that the one with the big beam that was kind of starting to come down anyway a few years ago?
Yeah, this, this is where, uh, this is where I can, with some certainty, even though I don't know for sure, say, yeah. It, it's gonna need some attention, uh, what to do there yet, we haven't, you know, we haven't really figured that out. Fortunately, it's inside a chained complex with gates locked and, and so forth.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's at least reasonably safe from a, from a public perspective.
Absolutely.
That's really, uh, that was really the bulk of the, uh, of the damage. Uh, we believe one of the power outages might have been caused by metal flying off that roof, wrapping itself around the, uh, primary line, Daryl would be able to talk intelligently about this part.
Well, we still haven't found all the metal that was blown off the roof.
It's clearly not on site.
Well, I'm, you know, there was a dam, a lot of damage at the Fulton Country Club as well, um, I saw Saturday morning when I went, went down. And I really want to give kudos to the crews that got out there and restored electricity. You know, it's a testament to the fact that we put a lot of utilities underground, that we really don't have that many outages.
Yeah.
And it's really unusual to have some, I don't, it probably close to an hour that, that night, and that, that's, so kudos to all the city staff for taking care of that, but.
Yeah, here we are, a year and a half removed from vacating that old property and, uh, very grateful that.
Yep.
Uh, we're not there, cause.
Yeah.
We'd be in a real hard place right now.
Right, and we don't have, didn't have any entries.
Yeah.
Right.
Thankfully so.
That's good, so thank you.
Rob, with the airport, are we under any liability risk with the plane that was in there? Is it, they kind of park at their own risk, they have their own insurance, or are we at?
If you own a plane out there, uh, you, you have insurance on that property, on that asset, um, uh, we're sizing that up, uh, I need to pull the agreement out, uh, because I'm sure that agreement has evolved over years. Who signed what when, and what terms might have been included in that, I, I'll be able to firm that up, you know, working, really working on it right now, uh, honestly, as early as about an hour and a half ago. In the next day or two, I should.
Comments just created the curiosity, if, if, if the building is damaged, are we at any risk of the content?
Yeah, the, the standard agreement today, we would not be, we would not be liable, but we just need to see, see who signed what, uh, under what agreement.
Knowing the value of all the planes out there, I'd say ninety percent of the owners have insurance on them, correct?
Yeah, and I assume that would be the case, it's quite an expensive, uh, asset for somebody to own to not have coverage on it.
Right.
So, yeah, but next day or two, I'll know the answer to that question, Jeff.
Was there any, no damage to any of our vehicles, fire?
None.
Police, nothing like that?
None, and again, can you imagine that that old warehouse complex, if we had, you know, fifty vehicles parked in the back parking lot? Every one of them would be damaged right now.
Was there anything at the, I thought I heard something about the golf course too.
I'm not aware, Clay, are you aware of any, any damage out there?
Okay, good.
It really got through pretty good, considerably, so.
Okay, thank you. All yours.
Okay, very good.
Well, you know, as we come down the line, we start eliminating things that I've got marked I'd like to talk about, but I do have one.
All right.
And Les, would you please come forward, please?
I think you and I already know the answer to this, don't talk to that anyway. You got a fence in your backyard, it doesn't come down to the sidewalk, but yet the grass is two foot high behind the fence and the road, whose responsibility is it to mow that?
If, if the fence is on, on the inside of the property line.
It's not.
It is not, it's right on the property line?
No, it's, they just slapped up a fence, and there's probably ten foot between the property line, or where the fence is now, and the, uh, sidewalk. Plus there's, uh, last time a tree fell down, they just cut it down and piled it on the city property. So I guess I'm wondering whose responsibility is to get, get that grass mowed, cause it's that tall.
If it's.
Property owner?
I'll talk to you.
It's the property owner, isn't it?
Well, I, I always thought, I always thought it was.
Is it the easement?
Is it on the easement, is it the city, I, I don't, I don't, where are you talking about?
Wood Street. Right there behind me.
Behind this house.
You know the house we're talking about?
Well, I don't, I don't remember seeing any pile there, but it could be, I mean, I'm not doubting, uh. I would guess it would be the property owner, you know?
Well, well, come in, we'll go out and look at it and give you a definitive answer.
Well, we, we did this last year and it, I knew how it went last year, but I, I hate to keep doing it every year, every year, every year.
Well, you know, that's about eighty percent of the town.
Yeah.
Is every year you have to tell them to mow the grass, they don't understand that when your grass gets to your knees, it needs to be cut.
I got mine cut all right.
Yeah, and I was gonna tell you about talking to this guy that lives on the other side of Wood Street over there.
I got most of it cut. I don't have it all cut yet. When it rains, it's hard to cut it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could, uh, somebody out there in Department Head, or maybe you can answer, what is the hole in West Seven Street that's been there for a couple of weeks with the cones all around it?
West Seven Street.
Yeah. West Seven? Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a culvert pipe right there that has a problem, um, we've got the culvert pipe ordered and we're scheduling that replacement right now.
Well, you might, at night, might want to put a flashing light because in the dark rain, that's, you can see the cones, but it's kind of dangerous.
Okay, thank, thanks, Steve.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, very good. Now move on to, uh, ordinances. And, uh, we have a first read, a couple of first reading ordinances. First ordinance is Bill Number fourteen seventy-two that has due as an amendment to our, uh, agreement with, with MoDOT out at the airport on a contract. Councilman Shilin, would you please present, uh, Bill Number fourteen seventy-two for a second reading, title only?
Bill Number, you say seventy-three or seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, I think.
Seventy-two.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was seventy-three. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, amendment to State Lot Grant Agreement, Amendment Number Three. Leading to the airport improvement program for the City of Fulton and establishing effective date. I move that Bill Number fourteen seventy-two be voted on tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, I have a motion in the second to advance Bill Number fourteen seventy-two for second reading. Is there any further discussion of motions? Hearing none.
I'm not sure I understand what the motion was, was it in the second tonight, or?
Kyle, you want to highlight what, what we're doing here?
His question was, was it to go to second?
Second reading.
That's what I heard.
Okay. I'm sorry, Wayne.
It was first reading.
It was first reading, I'm sorry, I was looking, uh, yeah.
Second reading, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second reading being advanced next morning.
Okay.
I think.
Okay. So did you get your questions answered on what we're doing here?
I did.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Very good, uh. Hearing no further questions, uh, all those in favor of advancing Bill fourteen seventy-two second reading, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. We'll now consider, uh, Bill Number fourteen seventy-three, which is an ordinance that, uh, changes, uh, some of the provisions in our nuisance article, or ordinance that has to do with grass weeds and debris. Uh, Councilman Vaughn, would you please present, uh, fourteen seventy-three for first reading, uh, title only?
Bill Number fourteen seventy-three, an ordinance amending Chapter forty-six, Environment, Article Two, Nuisance, Section forty-six thirty-five, Grass, Weeds, and Debris as Public Nuisance. Fulton City Code and establish an effective date. I move, I move to place Bill fourteen seventy-three for a second reading at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to advance fourteen seventy-three for second reading, uh, tonight.
At the next regular scheduled meeting, I'm sorry.
At the next regular scheduled meeting, and, uh, is there any further discussion of that motion?
I just have a question, does this include the, the trash cans he was talking about? Steve mentioned earlier?
It does not.
It's not the same thing?
It is not.
Okay.
And the basic, there's just some basic cleanup in this ordinance, the state went to ten days, the old ordinance said seven, and we're just gonna be able to move on with some of these properties a little bit quicker under this ordinance now. Get, maybe get the grass mowed a little faster.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Bill, uh, advancing Bill fourteen seventy-three for second reading, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. That, both those ordinances advance. We'll now consider, uh, second reading ordinances, and we have a, uh, ordinance that's declaring, uh, certain property as surplus. Uh, Councilman West, would you please, uh, present fourteen seventy-one, title only?
Yes, sir. Trying to find it here, all right. Bill Number fourteen seventy-one, ordinance number blank, an ordinance declaring city property to be surplus property, authorizing its sale and establishing effective date. I move for Bill Number fourteen seventy-one be advanced to third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Very good, thank you, I have an art, I have a motion to advance Bill fourteen seventy-one for third reading at tonight's council meeting, all, uh, is there any discussion?
These are the two pieces that we discussed before.
Yeah. Nothing's changed, right?
Nothing's changed.
Very good, hearing none, all those in favor of advancing fourteen seventy-one to third reading, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. Councilman West, uh, would you please present, uh, fourteen seventy-one for a third reading?
Sure. Bill Number fourteen seventy-one, an ordinance declaring city property to be surplus property, authorizing its sale and establishing.
authorizing its sale and establishing effective date. I move that Bill Number fourteen seventy-one be considered for final passage to tonight's council meeting.
Second. Okay, very good. I have a motion in the second to advance Bill fourteen seventy-one for final reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing fourteen seventy-one, please signify saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Okay, you've heard Bill Number fourteen seventy-one presented three times. It's now time for final consideration. As the clerk reads a roll call, would you please signify your choice, yes or no?
Okay, Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Schiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Shilin?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Okay. Very good. Bill Number fourteen seventy-one has passed. We'll move on to announcements. Again, if you'll check your calendars, Bill, next council meeting is June thirteenth. And we have an annual MML officials training, June the eighth through the ninth in Columbia. So if you're interested in that, there's still time to sign up. Madam clerk?
Actually, I think we already have everybody signed up.
Oh, okay, excellent.
And then I'll also note tomorrow night, those of you who are signed up to go to Centralia for the division meeting, we will meet in the lower lot at five o'clock to leave. I think that's it.
Tomorrow night at five?
Tomorrow night at five?
Question? On the MML elected official training, is that both days, eight and nine?
I plan on going both days, so someone will, someone will be going both days. You don't have to if you can't make it both days.
They're doing a little different than they did two, three years ago. It is pretty much a full first day now, and I think it's a half second day. It's a full first day.
Yeah.
Usually, it used to be an afternoon and the next morning. And now, so, yeah, it's gonna be a little bit more beneficial this year.
Okay. Move for adjournment? We do not have a need for executive session, therefore I'll accept the motion for adjournment. And the second, all in favor, please signify saying yes. Yes. Thank you. Good evening.